Keep them there later.
No.
Please bring the meeting to order, please. Welcome, everybody. It's a big turnout tonight, huh? We're gonna open it up for public comment. If you have something that you'd like to say, you have three minutes. Raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You come to the podium, talk to the Select Board, use the microphone, and say what you want to say, give or take. And if the subject you want to talk about is already on the agenda, please wait till we get to that agenda item, and I will provide room for public comment during those agenda items. So, let's start. Anybody want to kick it off in the back? Come on up.
Thank you.
State your name and address when you get up here.
Okay. Thank you. Hello. My name's Anelia Parrish. I brought my family with me, a couple neighbors. I live over on Campground Road. I'm here to make a request for a speed limit sign at the beginning of our road. We live just close to the border of Epping, and when you turn out of our driveway, it turns into Epping, and it is posted there. But when you start your entrance onto Campground Road, it's not posted. And we're very active. We have two little boys. We get out a lot. We love the neighborhood. We love the farms, and just want more safety. And we just have two little people that are very important to us.
I understand.
Don't want anything to happen, so if it's possible, we would love...
Chief?
Steve and I had discussed this already.
Oh, okay.
No problem putting a sign out there, but it's 35 miles per hour.
Okay.
Epping has this posted at 25. I don't know how they did that. You have to do impact studies, and we've already talked, we've dealt with this on James Farm.
Oh, okay.
It's next to impossible to get a speed limit lower than 30. But we checked with Karen Rossi, and we're, it's the way that's zoned, it would be a 35 mile an hour.
Okay.
Speed limit. So Steve has no problem putting a sign up out there.
For 35?
35, because that's what it has to be posted.
Okay.
Without doing an impact study...
Yeah.
That would be the only way you could get it lower to 30. And I know dealing with James Farm Road issue, the state engineers, basically, that's next to impossible.
Okay. Well, that's good information.
Just, you know, yeah, because sometimes people, you know, they ask that thinking it's going to be a certain speed limit, and then when we tell them what it's going to be, sometimes you're better off to leave it not posted.
Okay. Well, that's good information. So thank you so much, guys.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, do you guys want us to go put the sign up?
Steve, come on up.
It says 25 in Epping, just when you... Yeah.
The way I understand it is I need your guys' permission to put the signs up. So if you want to put the signs up, I can put the signs up. It's not an issue. I have them.
Do we need to make a motion? Okay, so I'll render a motion to install the speed limit signs, 35 miles per hour, as discussed with the Chief Franzfield and the lady... Seconds? All in favor? Got it?
Can we ask the chief a question?
Yes.
Is it possible, I know one of the things you did on James Farm is you did a, I don't know what you did, but you could track how fast people are going?
Yeah, I don't know if Steve's, Steve's been dealing with a lot the past week, so I don't know if he's had a chance to look at it. We did almost every street in town with Randy.
Yeah. Thank you.
So that he could adjust his plow schedule, so he knew where the heaviest traffic was at a certain time. So pretty sure we did Campground Road, so maybe Steve will get a chance to look for it. If not, the snowbank's going now, and we can get out there and do another survey.
Right.
Absolutely.
Just to give you some clarification in terms of, because that would tell you there's like 10 cars going 50 miles, whatever it is.
Yep. She can call you there.
If it's 20 miles an hour, you said Epping is on the same road?
25.
Right.
Yeah.
You can't piggyback off of that?
Can't. You can't go below 30 unless you do an impact study.
So they must have done that impact.
Nottingham posted all this, 25, and when I called to see how they did it, they just said we left the sign up. So that's not enforceable in court. So, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else have public comment? All right, and we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on to agenda item number three. Mr. Rosicki, Oyster River Schools.
Visual aid. Jim Rosicki, Oyster River Schools, Facilities Office. Reason for me coming today is to seek the Select Board's approval for putting an infiltration basin on town property. It's actually right on the edge. It's the southeast corner of the Massway School property line. It's 155. We refer to it as the entrance to the bus loop area. It seems to be now labeled Lake Massway 2, and Lake Massway 1 was corrected a couple of years ago with the drainage project right next to the church. So this is a lot smaller in scale. It's not going to be a quasi rain garden, but I would like to excavate on the corner edge of that property and just to get water divert out of our bus loop and into that hole. So engineer said it can be really labeled as a catch basin, per se. Infiltration basin seems to be the more appropriate word. I did meet with Steve Bullock from DPW a few weeks back, so we did tour that property or toured that area. Where we kind of want to put it now, it's, we don't think we're going to have to remove any trees. I am always a little concerned if we dig over there, if it's going to disturb any of the root system, but right, as I think right now, we're not going to need to. The only other thing in that area that I think to be cognizant of, there's some underground conduit for TV out there or a cable. So we'd like to do something at the tail end of the Massway School project. We still have some excavating to do out back in a basketball court, so we'll have the excavator on site anyway. We'd like that same contractor to dig a hole, put this in there, and regrade out there to that catch or that infiltration basin area.
I think the only question I have on it is how deep can it get?
That I don't know. I think typically, I think they may be around 10 feet. I think there's a certain amount of materials that are put in around that to allow that water to be able to self-reach through, but I don't know exactly the depth of that structure. Sorry.
I have a question for the town administrator. Is this going to require an easement until they can maintain this in the town property?
Probably should.
Yeah. Most likely, you're going to need an easement. It's not a big issue to get at this point. That will give you privilege and right to maintain the catch basin. Probably going to have to talk to Karen Rossi, I guess, at this point? See if we get the proper language. No, this item has any major issues.
Should I come up with me?
Um, the courses are identified, but I was concerned about. Other than that, I just need to see the wording of the easement. I'm fine with it. Thank you very much.
Good.
Now, I think we'll hold off on motion and report it back when you have the easing language. When did you want to get started on this?
I think April was the timeframe that our contractor would like to get in there, so that could be at the tail end of April.
Okay.
And who's going to do the easement? Is there a legal cost?
I mean, I can draft the easement. I think you had an easement, did you have an easement done with the Lee Church Congregational relative to...
We did.
What you did there?
Yeah.
You can borrow language from easements if we've already done, have, so I don't know. I guess, should it require, and I guess it should have legal review?
Yes.
Are you suggesting that the school department take the cost for that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, is the school going to be in agreement with that?
I don't think so.
If there's, if there are legal fees involved, the school will merit the cost for that. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Spoke loud and clearly.
Thank you. Larry Kenberg, Recreation Commission Chair.
Evening.
Evening.
You summoned me, so...
I'm sorry?
You summoned me, so... We discussed the MOU at the last meeting.
We discussed, well, this is the ORYA MOU. I don't think we discussed the ORYA MOU anymore.
We did.
Yes, we did.
We did.
Yep, changes to that, some things that we did. And fee changes, things like that. And Julie had also updated some things in there also.
So to me, right now, we're at the point where we have, over the past week, seen two MOUs, one of which is the ORYA MOU, and one of which is the Maximum Velocity MOU.
Correct.
And we have, and to me, they look like twins with minor exceptions for ORYA versus Maximum Velocity, and a couple of little things, but for the most part, the language is fairly straightforward. So I guess, I guess the question becomes now, you've suggested that the Recreation Commission take over if you were the management of, the overall management of the fields, so on and so forth.
Not exactly.
Okay.
No. What we discussed last time was, yes, there was a proposal by Maximum Velocity, and my recommendation, and we discussed it at the last Recommission meeting, was to table that at this time, simply because of timing. We have an April 1 deadline with regard to the new MOU with ORYA. And since we were so late getting that other proposal to consider it at this point in time, we recommended to the Select Board at the last meeting that we wait until next year, that we take a look at both proposals later on in this year, and then come back and address it at that time. And part of that is because we fund ORYA, because of the funding that's already been tenatively approved by the Select Board through the budget, that it would probably not be anybody's best interest at this point to pursue the new MO, or the MOU from Maximum Velocity. Not that we don't want to, it's just a timing issue at this point.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we would just maintain the status quo for now?
Correct. We'd maintain the status quo. And what I had, what I had requested at the last meeting was that the Recommission be given oversight to ORYA because of some issues that we've had with regard to maintenance of the fields. That was the request.
Okay.
The maintenance of the fields would still continue based on the MOU and the town cutting the grass and so on. That wouldn't change.
Comment?
A question going around, Miss Leslie, if you could tell me why you're recommending reduce costs? Because that money that comes to you to use the fields? Doesn't that come to the Recreation Commission to use for public...
It does. That money comes into our revolving fund, which we utilize for programs. That's, that was, excuse me, that was, those were dollars that we used to start the music in park. You're absolutely right. But we felt that revising the fees would bring it more in line with the market rate and make it more reasonable for people to use, hopefully get more usage on the field, certain fields that are not getting used.
Spot?
I'm all set.
You're all set? Town administrator, is there any major changes that were, that you saw or any issues?
I have one question that I'd like to get clarification on, and that is on item four at the end under the usage agreement. And item four says all dogs must be on a leash at all times. Dogs and other animals are not allowed on any playing fields. I think that presents a little bit of an issue with regard to the multipurpose field since it is considered a playing field also, but it's not solely a playing field. For example, the fair, the town fair, we have dogs on the field at that point. Now, I can understand it with regard to the little league field, the baseball fields. That's not an issue, but I'd just like to see if there should be some clarification of that item.
I think that got put in a couple of years ago based on concerns that some people had and possibly also the Conservation Commission with dog waste being on the playing fields. We can, we can change it. That's what the board would like to do. But I understand your point. I mean, there are dogs on the field.
And there are, there are dog owners that do use multipurpose field for speed throwing and things like that. They're animals, and they do clean up. Most of them do.
Well, if they're, I mean, if they're using the field to play frisbee with the dog, the dog's not on a leash either.
Correct.
So, so it's entirely up to what the board wants to do.
Down?
I want to leave the leash law in, because I've heard those complaints before. So I want to leave them all. Maybe we can leave them all this year, we can discuss it the next year.
Okay. Shall I come up? You're okay? Okay, I think that's the right thing to do also.
Good. Thank you.
Are you postponing action on the motion in front of you?
No, I'd like to move forward.
Okay.
So I moved to approve the proposed MOU as presented, more with the following changes, which we didn't think any. Ask town administrator to prepare the MOU for final signature. Can I get a second?
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Could we, could we ask one of the things that was in the emails about this whole process? I don't know if we have them with you, in terms of, there was many mentions of all the cuts that were made. Could you go through in terms of what exactly was reduced?
Sure. So as you may recall, there were cuts to everybody's, nearly every budget this time around, including the recreation budget. There was a cut of $13,700 to the Oyster River Youth Association. There was a cut of $1,900 to the Recreation Events budget. There was a cut of $4,000 to the town fair at the request of the town fair committee. There was a decrease of $900 to the supply line, and there was a cut of $500 to the electricity line, I think to bring it more in line with what the actual expenses have been. So altogether, the new discount of the cut to the Oyster River Youth Association, the electricity bill, and the town fair, which don't really impact the Recreation Commission's ability to do its programs, it's a cut of $1,000. And I don't know if Mr. Kenberg mentioned it, but the Recreation Commission also has a revolving fund that's available to them. And right now, the revolving fund has a balance of $3,790. I'll also point out that in fiscal 18, the Recommission didn't use all of the $6,900 that was in the event budget. And I don't know whether they're planning to spend all of it for fiscal 19, but they did not spend all of it for fiscal 18.
And those cuts are related to last year's budget or what they requested?
The current year's budget.
Okay, so it's budget to budget?
Budget to budget. Correct. Budget to budget.
Larry?
Yeah, I'd just like to add one other thing to that. We are doing fundraising now, so we will be getting donations into the revolving fund to help offset some of those costs. So that's something that we're going to be actively seeking to try to make up some of the budget cut. Do some other things if you wanted to.
Thank you. Then, do we, do we have to accept those orders? How does that work with revolving funds?
I had to double check the RSA. I think the Recreation Commission can accept them on their own, but we'll double check.
Okay. Any other comment relative to that subject? I feel as though there is. Yes, sir?
Should I speak the next action after this or during this one?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to speak for the Maximum Velocity MOU now or after, when we're scheduled to?
No, after. What we said is we're just going to maintain the status quo until, until we get to a point in time. All right? Agreed? Yes?
Okay. Oh, gosh. Are we, something for this, could we move on to the next question?
Well, I'm just, I'm just taking questions right now.
Okay.
Hi. I'm Kenealia Knightie. I am the program director for the town lead Recommission. I wanted to say that we have discussed at length the proposed budget cuts and the impact that it will have on the programs that we already have in place, as all the programs that we are currently and actively trying to plan and implement to the town. And I feel that with the cuts coming, it has made it necessary to have to fundraise to expand all these programs. Like Music in the Park is one of our newer and bigger programs, and this year, we're hoping to expand it. With budget cuts, we won't be able to expand it. I don't even know that we would have enough money to host it, period. I have to say that I am in favor of the Maximum Velocity MOU, because with that MOU, he would be paying us to have control of scheduling the fields, and it could recoup some of the money that we are losing through our MOU with ORYA, as well as through the budget cuts.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to move on. Item number five. No, we're gonna, we're, we don't, we said we're gonna delay that unless we have some comments we want to make on the, that MOU. It's not in effect right now.
So I gotta, may I?
Sure. Please.
So, I'm John Carlton, 24, Sawyer Road, Lee, New Hampshire. So when I came in and asked that the Recreation Commission look over my MOU, it was my understanding that they had a discussion about it, but they didn't get to vote on it. They didn't have any insight, no thought process. They didn't even take a vote. It was just hating. Now, that's not democracy. There were two MOUs on the table for both of you, the three selectmen to look at. I'm then, been here for a long time. So when you go into a Recreation Commission meeting, which I was on for eight years, and then MOUs come in front of us, Robert's Rules of Order, we go through it, we have to vote. We have to vote so that the selectmen know how the body stands as a whole. So you can't do it through an authoritarian or just push it off. Actually, I have to have a vote. And there wasn't a vote in their meeting minutes, and that's not right to you guys, to help you guys make a decision on what best suits the citizens of the town elite. So take that into consideration. I also know that there are differences here between our proposal and Oyster River Youth Association. Town gives them last year $28,800. This year, it's going to be cut down to $18,000, and then they get to use the facilities for your charge. They then pay to have it fertilized, overseeded, and worked unto it, but that money comes basically out of funds that the town is giving them. In our MOU, we offered $2,500, and then we would also pay all those ancillary costs. We then did say that any funds that come into it would go back to Maximum Velocity FC to offset the $2,500, then with a 50-50 split. That's because we're not receiving any funds from the town whatsoever. We don't want to receive any funds from the town whatsoever. We've got citizens in Lee, Durham, Madberry, and I just think that through Robert's Rules of Order, which I know extremely well, that when you go through and you have two MOUs and things that go on, and you haven't had anything signed, and then it's all a comment, it goes back to the commission to have a conversation, they just have a conversation, but they don't get to vote on it. And they had enough people to vote. That's doing a disservice to the citizens elite. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comment? Are you technically on five or are you still on four?
No, technically, well, good question.
We're on five.
We moved to five.
Okay.
Still five is five.
There's one more comment. Sorry.
Well, the reason I'm asking is if you're on five, you said before that if somebody wanted to speak, they can, so...
Floor's open on five, right?
Floor's open on five, yes.
So if somebody wants to speak, they can.
I was just going to ask if you can come up.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Goodman. I live at 74 Newtown Plains Road.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
My name is Kelsey Goodman, and I live at 74 Newtown Plains Road. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure I can hear. I'm the secretary for the lead Recommission. I think everything that I was going to say, Kami said, so I agree with everything she said. There's also the possibility that we could lose the money from Joff if we don't update it. And I think that he's absolutely in it for the kids. I've seen a lot of these other people who are just doing it because they've had these jobs forever. I know personally, Joff has done everything he can to take care of the kids on his teams. So I'm in favor of Joff, the Maximum Velocity.
Okay. So we'll move to number six for now. Yes, sir? Is that...
Go ahead.
I had a question on, on the earlier one.
Please.
I'm Robin Wonderlich, and I live at One Alderbrook Way in Lee, and I don't understand how, just how you have two MLRs...
MOUs.
MOUs, and consider only one. And if, I guess if one was too late to be considered, that would be a consideration. I have known Joff for 18 years or so and worked together. I worked with him on, I do architecture, and I designed the pavilion for the, for the fields down there with him, and, and he is, he has been and is dedicated to the kids and the activities in this town. And I've watched that over the course of that time. He lived, he was, he was the second to the last owner in our condos until we finally owned all of them back again. And he lived there for a significant period of time, and I see nothing but integrity in, in what he does. And I guess I understand if it's, if it's too late to be considered, but to be, to be tabled and pushed aside, I think is, I, I think, as was stated before, that his interests are with the kids and with, and for the interest of the town. And I've seen that over the course of that time, so I want to speak for him. And if I'm speaking for him to be, you know, firmly considered for next year, I'm doing that then.
Okay.
But if there's a way of considering it this year, it can work, the town can consider it, so.
Well, let me explain, and it's hard to possible that I made a mistake, but I don't think so.
We're all human.
We said, excuse me, we said that we would maintain the status quo. We have two MOUs in front of us. One of them was the ORYA, which, as I understand it, is still in effect. Is that right? Okay. So we have an MOU on the table. We have a proposed MOU for Maximum Velocity saying, here's our, here's our terms and conditions. But we just had a discussion that said we would maintain the status right now until next season. Did I, did I get that wrong? If we, if we maintain the status quo, it says we're going to operate just, just as we're operating right now. Does it not? Am I missing something? Larry? Did you have something different in mind when... Did you have something different in mind when we set that?
Okay. We are not discounting Mr. Carlton's MOU at all. It, the MOU, his MOU came to us late in the process, kind of after the fact, when we were, when you had authorized us to go ahead and take a look at the MOU and make recommendations for any changes, updates, or anything like that. The last meeting that we had for March, we had this MOU on, Mr. Carlton's MOU on the agenda. He wasn't there. We had no representation from his organization at that point in time. I have requested from Mr. Carlton many times to have representation at our meetings, and although he has attended several of them, we haven't had much, and I would've expected to see some representation at the last meeting, it wasn't there. So we felt that, I felt as chairman, that we should table this, not discount it, not forget about it, but because we have an April first deadline, which is three weeks away, we had to get this to you as you had requested and move forward with that, and then leave it up to the select board to decide what to do. But you had had a copy of Mr. Carlton's MOU also.
Yes.
Prior to, and you had plenty of time to look at that also. And we discussed that, even at this meeting, so.
It's your intention going forward for the Rec Commission to look at both of them going forward?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. No, it's not a matter of, of just throwing aside Mr. Carlton's MOU or request. It's a matter of timing at this point because we've already allocated funds to ORYA, and I don't think it makes sense to pay ORYA and then midstream say, okay, we're just gonna take somebody else's MOU at this point. I think we're too far down the road for this.
So, we're gonna operate with both MOUs?
No, we're gonna operate with the ORYA.
The ORYA MOU?
Is to operate with the ORYA MOU this year.
Right.
In the fall, we'll take a look, when it comes up for review again, then we'll take a close look at the two MOUs and bring it to you folks, and decide which one, which way we should go, and we'll have our recommendations at that point, but we are not.
And at that time, at that time, if we have language issues with the MOU, we'll resolve it that.
We'll resolve all that stuff, but I think it would be more appropriate to deal with it on that basis right now and move forward in the future.
Okay.
I hate that, you know, I know we put a lot of work into it, there's no way, there's no question there, and we're not saying it's not valid, it's just a matter of timing right now.
Okay, understand. Any more comment? Steve Bullock.
Good evening. I'm here before you today to request to lower the posted weights on all town roads to twenty-three thousand pounds. Trying to shoot for Friday until at least April thirtieth, if the frost comes out of the ground and everything tightens up faster, we'll take them on faster. The only reason I'm going so low this year is we've had so much rain in the fall, and you can drive anywhere on the side of the road and see the amount of water just sitting on your shoulders, that everything's pretty much floating right now. I sent you guys the pictures just from the two days in February we had, and we had ruts on sheep road a foot deep, so.
Right now, it's what, fifty-five thousand is the upper limit on it?
Last year, you guys approved fifty-five thousand.
Right.
We didn't have anywhere near the water in the road that we currently have now. Fox Garrison's currently posted year-round at twenty-six thousand and one. So twenty-three thousand effectively making it so loaded, six-wheeler can drive on the roads for right now, that would put them overweight. I've talked to loggers and stuff like that, and with it being such a low weight, willing to work with people. So, if you gotta get heavy stuff in and out first thing in the morning after everything's froze, then that's fine, but the weight limits are like specifically for in the afternoon when everything's been sitting in the sun and getting turned up snot. Because I mean, in February alone, in those two days we had at the beginning of the year, we put five loads of stone on Demerit, ten loads of stone on Cartland, and eight loads on sheep. So we've already started, and we're just worried that we're gonna have issues.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. A question, now that you brought it up, twenty-three thousand doesn't, I'm fine with that, but how are you gonna police that, if I may say? You know, these guys can run in the morning, do they have to get permission from you?
Yes.
So they need to get permission from you?
Yes, and Karen's been talking to them because she's, is already in planning, and I've talked to every person that owns a construction company in this town, except for Oyster River Construction that lives out on the end of Hobbs. I haven't talked to him yet, 'cause he's got all his equipment at his house. I'm not here to shield, shut people down and stuff like that. Like AccuCut that lives on Mitchell Road, he has to get his stuff in and out. I just, the regular homeowner ordering a truckload of gravel for their house type thing, and they get delivered at three o'clock in the afternoon, or spend fifty all day is what I'm trying to avoid.
Can we have the highway supervisor define snot for the secretary? That must be some kind of technical term, I'm not familiar with that. Could you define what that is, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Where you take a lot of fines from dirt and add about fifteen gallons of water to it, and when you hit it, it just goes. So.
I guess we'll have to start videoing these. All right, I'd like to enter a motion to authorize the highway supervisor to post weight limits of twenty-three thousand pounds on all roads as deemed necessary to be in effect from the date of posting to April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Selectman Buckey. This last week, Oyster River School District held a very informative session at the elementary school about the middle school. I got the little handouts, pretty good. They have a conceptual drawing. No conceptual. That was pretty good. So, I just wanted to share with the group that one of the things the superintendent said is he's more than willing, after they get more information, probably sometime in May, to come back and do a presentation for us. So I was wondering if it would be interesting to have him come and do that, 'cause that was one thing.
Absolutely, yes, more information, the better.
So maybe can we ask Sue to give me that to the superintendent? So whenever he gets that, I think he said May something to come back, and so schedule something with the town administrator. The other thing I spoke to the superintendent about, which was very unusual, because he didn't know we were being charged by the school when we have our delivery session. So his, his thing to me was, if they've been invoiced, if we have, I don't know if we have, have we paid it? He said that he will cut us a check for that. So from going forward, there's going to be no charge for that particular service. So, that is an offer. We don't have to.
We should accept.
I think we do want to accept.
Could you also relate to the superintendent that we'll take him up on this offer, Sue? If you could do that?
Sure.
So I thought that was good. He said, one of the things that we talked about is charging ourselves back and forth doesn't seem to make any sense for those small amounts.
Yeah, I agree.
So he's more than willing to do that, so.
Great.
So that being said, the MOU that just got approved took Oyster River School District out, let's just say as a preferred customer, which would mean that if they used our fields, we'd be charging them for the use of our fields?
Well, we'll have to talk about that.
Okay. But so it's, but as it stands right now, we're leaving it the way it is, where they are not?
Yep.
Okay.
One of the things that was also mentioned in here, and maybe Jim can speak to it a little bit, is if the middle school project goes forward, there's gonna be some kind of conversation that you're gonna have with the different towns about using those fields just like you did when high school was in construction for their fields and stuff. So whenever that comes up, so come back and have a conversation with us about using those particular fields, 'cause you've got Madbury, you've got ones in Durham, and you've got ours, so I'm not sure which ones will work out best for you. But there's a twenty, I don't know, maybe Brian can help me, in terms of there's like a twenty-two months, in terms of that, when those fields are gonna be out of commission at the middle school?
Right.
So you're gonna be looking for other places to have.
That field is not, the field back there is only used maybe twice a week.
Okay.
And it's, it's not usable most of the year because of the drainage on it and so forth. So it wouldn't be like it would with high school, not to that level.
So have a conversation when you guys are ready to do that? I don't know, I don't know if that's a gym thing or who is it, but I'll blame Jim.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
I'll hold him responsible.
Athletics, too, that's a big, big deal.
Soccer and softball is what that field is used for, that field's all about.
So, when we come to that point, we'll have a conversation. Okay?
Julie Glover, town administrator.
So it's my understanding from speaking with Karen Rossi that during recent discussions of the planning board relative to the regardings, there was some discussion of possibly posting High Road as no parking. And so out of that conversation, we let us to wait for a look at what our current parking ordinance is on, and know if we can really plan to pack it. So, department heads and I agree that regardless of whether we do ultimately make High Road no parking, we should probably revamp between the parking ordinances that we have, because they've looked at for quite a while. I don't know whether selectmen of course can, you know, chime in here as to the reasons why High Road might want to be no parking. I think that, and Ms. Rossi, I'm not certain, but I think she felt that making it no parking was a bit problematic, because if we make it no parking for every one on High Road. So in other words, if someone who lives on High Road had a family reunion, they wouldn't be able to use High Road to park the vehicles.
Obviously, we move forward in the planning board and approve ever gotten, so they can operate the facility. But part of the issue, of course, is with respect to having any cars on the road whatsoever. They're all supposed to be inside the parking lot, and town administrator is absolutely right. I mean, if you put a no parking on the road itself, that prevents neighbors from outside cookouts and so forth, and having their friends park there. So I think it is a point of discussion. I'm not so sure it's actually possible at this point. I was gonna ask the chief at this time, if you had any comment on that?
Well, we had talked about possibly posting one side of the road.
Yes.
Steppingstone Road, we have sections of the road that are no parking. You can always post that end where the, where the issue is, not to penalize everybody for what one issue has created. You know, we've allowed, if people call us and say, hey, at graduation party, we can't fit everybody in the driveway. And I'll tell them, just park, everybody is far off the road, I'll set a patrol unit out, they tell us when they're having the event, if there's an issue, I need a contact number at that car, you know, if somebody doesn't comply, get all the way as far off the roads again. And we've never really had issues, you know, you can work around it, you can post it, and still if somebody needs to have a wedding or whatever it is, they notify us, and we keep an eye on it as long as we can get emergency services down there. We've always worked around it.
Okay.
It's more for the, just the random people who just wanna park and do whatever, but we know there's gonna be a function from one until three. I can set a patrol unit out there, and as long as they're complying with what we told them to, it's always been okay.
Thank you.
So this is just something the department heads and I have been working on, with the data, the overall, the part of the, so we can revisit.
Take a look at this?
Yeah, we can revisit High Road as we have that discussion.
Okay.
As you know, we just received the fiscal eighteen annual audit. This year, the information was given to us particularly late by the auditors, it really jams us up, especially relative to getting the town report out. I mean, we were able to get the town report out, but it was a little touch and go. But that is, that was the third year of a three-year contract, so we will be putting an RFP out, and I'm working with Joanne Clancy, the treasurer, on that to put that together and get that out the door. And you should definitely think about putting something in there. I don't know whether auditors accept what the data damage is, but you definitely wanna put timelines in there so that we don't get in this position in the future, so. We received a notice in the office today from the Exeter Zoning Board telling us about a meeting on March nineteenth, which there wouldn't be time to put this in the agenda packet because our meeting is not to March twenty-fifth, relative to an application for a cell tower on Kingston Road. So if anybody.
I'm sorry, what road?
Kingston Road. So if anyone is interested, we have a notice at Town Hall. If anyone wants to go to the meeting, it's March nineteenth at seven P.M. in Exeter. And then last, just wanna remind the board that I will be on vacation beginning Thursday, and I seriously doubt that I will be here at the March twenty-fifth Select Board meeting.
Is this the Argentina trip?
It is my Argentina trip.
Just won't be around for a quick call, huh? Very long. Denise can handle it.
I mean, I'll have my cellphone, I have no idea.
In Argentina, yeah, that's a good one. Okay, have a good time.
Thank you.
Question about the audit? Can you check with your other town administrator people and to see if other towns had performance clauses in there, agreements?
Maybe should we take a look at exactly where that cell tower is gonna be? Could Steve maybe take a look at it to see, or, you know, where is it?
I think Kingston Road Route one eleven, so it's not even really near here.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, honestly, I'm not sure why we'd get a letter's notice on a cell tower in Exeter, but maybe they are talking about it.
I think Kingston, I think Kingston Road Route one eleven. Either that, it's one twenty-five, south of Epping. I'd have to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give them, show them the notice tomorrow.
Yeah.
Item nine, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
And then also just a reminder that the next meeting of the Select Board, because it's supposed to be post-election, this is gonna be the organizational meeting, Select Board.
All right, make a motion to enter into non-public session, R. New Hampshire, statute ninety-one hyphen A colon three, Roman numeral two, T and A X two. Can I get a second? All in favor? No call vote? Selectman Buckey?
Yes.
Selectman Of course?
Yes.
Thank you. Any miscellaneous unfinished business?
Oh, I was gonna say that. I would like on the agenda for the next meeting to have a discussion about the Town Center project. If it passes, how do we proceed? If it fails, how do we proceed? So, if it has the town administrator put that on the, I don't know if it's already there, but.
Did, did the board talk, are you sealing any of the minutes?
Yes.
We need to seal them in.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So I'll make a motion to seal, non-public session minutes. I'll call both. Selectman Budgie?
Yes.
Selectman of course?
Yes.
Oh, no.
We lost it.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, oh.
What? What?
You just wanna get home.
No, I wanna move these tables downstairs, which is what I, I.
Just to let the board know, the Town Center Vision Committee specifically, shepherded by our resident engineer, John Tappin, has been meeting with the PCB, Planning and Zoning, Selectmen's Office, and Town Park, working on the configuration of the municipal building. So there's gonna be a whole bunch of series of meetings to work with each of those groups, find an arrangement that works for them. So, that's progressing. So, no matter what happens tomorrow, we'll have that. That's what we're working on now. And then crossing our fingers for tomorrow. We'll see how that works.
Good. Well, what we can do is hope it passes tomorrow, right?
That's correct.
We'll see.
Right now, anyway.
And we are meeting tomorrow, I mean Wednesday. We're meeting Wednesday at one o'clock.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.